All right, welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting for the city of Galt for June the 17th, 2025. Mr. Splendario, can I have a report from the closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council convening closed session provided direction to staff and there's no reportable action.
All right, thanks, sir. We'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone can please now join us in a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, June 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 21st at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
All right, thank you. Now move on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do I have anything from the council? No? All right, with that, we will move on to item G, Presentations. The first presentation this evening is going to be the Galt Youth Commission's Student Member Appointments and the administering of the Oath of Office. Ms. Hubert?
So first, we need council's appointment and the recommendation is accept by motion the student member appointment selected by the Galt Youth Commission, adult mentors, and administer the oath of office. There were seven student member vacancies with a total of 11 applications received. The Galt Youth Commission distributed applications at school sites, posted on the city's website, and on social media. The following student applications were selected Sophia Buzo, Savannah Maldonado, Gabrielle Akers, Estrella Diaz, Armon John, Trinity Holden, and Madeline Dula. So if you have any questions, they are here before their oath or we do need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by vice mayor. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
So if I could have the student members come on up front for your oath of office?
Would you guys care to introduce yourselves too, if you don't mind? Just maybe face the crowd. You guys can line up here and then maybe just start maybe over here with Gabrielle and then just say who you are and go that way.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Akers.
Hi, my name is Madeline Holden and this is my first time.
Hi, I'm Sarah.
Hi, I'm Ramon Dunn and this is also my first time.
Hi, I'm Trinity Holden and this is my first time.
Hi, I'm Sophia Buzo and this is my first time.
Okay, so I'm going to be talking to the microphone and you're just going to repeat after me at the same time. So go ahead and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I and state your name.
I, I would say Gabrielle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am a student member.
As I am a student member.
Of the Galt Youth Commission.
Of the Galt Youth Commission.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of commission member.
Of a commission member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, you're official.
I want to congratulate all of you and thank you to the returning members too. We really appreciate your continued service. While you guys are handing those out, I would like to give a shout out to our mentors that are here tonight. Mentor Harris, raise your hand. And mentor Jessica and Sharon, thank you so much. We appreciate you guys being a part of this. It wouldn't be... It's just as difficult to recruit adult mentors as it is... Well, actually, it's not difficult to recruit kids. We had a lot of applicants, so more difficult to get the adults, but... So thank you all. We appreciate you. Look forward to working with you guys. Any photos before you're done? We're done, photos? Okay, all right. Counselor, want to say anything or we move on?
Just thank you for being willing to serve your community.
Yes. All right, well with that, we will move on to our second presentation, which is the Galt Youth Commission and a report to the city council.
Your... Your clicker's right on top of the podium right there.
Sorry? This one? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, esteemed council members and attendees. Thank you all for this opportunity to report on behalf of the Galt Youth Commission tonight. My fellow commissioners and I are beyond ecstatic to be able to share our projects and events from this year. I'd like to start off by introducing our 2024-2025 commissioner team. My name is Karina Lollian and I'm the retiring chair. Our vice chair was Gabrielle Akers, Alexis Ortega is our social media chair, Daniel Olivera Rivera is our treasurer, Nav Karen Sandu is our secretary, Abigail Woods as our sergeant of arms, Kaitlyn Colors is our fundraising chair, Lindsay Smith is our community liaison, and Elise Feal, Ginger Maverick Smith, and Annalise Bowman are serving as our fellow commissioners. A new change that we made to the bylaws this past year was adding an additional two seats to our previous 10-person commission. This allowed us to swear in six new commissioners in August of 2024. With our current 12-person commission, we have been able to better represent the youth from across our high schools and encourage involvement, as well as better contribute to the important discussions regarding the future of our youth and topics such as food waste, which will further be discussed in our presentation. You may be sitting here wondering what even is the commission or what are we trying to accomplish? The overall mission of the Galt Youth Commission is to encourage the youth to participate in community service and activities that are purposeful in building better citizens. Building civic unity, encouraging interactions within the community, and collaborating with organizations to recognize and grow youth involvement. One of our first projects from this year was participating in the 2024 Fourth of July Parade. Building our float together fostered a sense of teamwork and creativity amongst us, which this project not only helped us engage with those along the parade path, but also strengthened our overall pride of Galt and lead an overarching theme that marked this year of forming genuine connections with our community through involvement and service. I'm now going to hand it over to Mr. Daniel Olivera Rivera.
Hi. In this event, we partnered with the A-3-Z Foundation in order to set up the Veteran Memorial Dedication Ceremony in Thornton. We helped to spread mulch and pea gravel, set up tables and chairs, and decorate the area patriotically. This event was really helpful to our community and the youth because we were able to help celebrate our beloved veterans and also show the youth presence in the local area. We also attended the National Night Owl event and attended all three park gatherings. We worked alongside the local police department in order to help strengthen the bond between our community and our local police. We talked to many people and businesses who attended and were able to see their perspectives on the situation in our community. This was very beneficial as we were able to see and grow through the different perspectives of other people in the community and see how we could better the community by looking through a different lens other than our own. I'll now pass it on to Lindsay Smith.
Earlier in October, the Galt Youth Commission participated in the trunk retreat, a fun and meaningful way to connect with the youth and also our local community. By decorating a car and dressing up and handing out candy, it created a festive environment for for us to celebrate not only Halloween, but for us to celebrate our local community and for us to be brought together. This event allowed the commission to not only give back to the community, but also engage with the youth and build leadership skills. It strengthens communication, also leadership skills, and encourages the youth involvement in a positive way. I will now pass it on to Abby Woods.
Okay, our last parade that we participated in was the Lighting of the Night. This event holds a very special place in my heart because LNS Appliances graciously donated three large boxes of children toys for us to hand out along the parade route. Throughout the parade, we were able to hand out over 300 toys to children and seeing their immediate joy and surprise was the highlight of this event. Being able to physically go out and talk and leave something positive in the hands of our community was an experience that will stick with us forever. And now I will hand it over to Ms. Gabrielle Akers.
So for Random Map of Kindness Week was a week in February where our commissioners wrote a lot of cards. So for example, our chair, Karina, she wrote that card in particular, but each of our commissioners wrote about two cards, either making them themselves, and we handed these out to cafeteria workers and bus drivers throughout the Galt High School Joint Union District. And that was both Liberty and Galt, but they were very thankful and we also provided a lot of gift cards just to local coffee shops that they were able to just have, just to show our appreciation to these people that don't usually get a lot of recognition, but we do care for and we do recognize.
Another community event we participated in this year was Empty Bulls fundraiser. My fellow commissioners and I aided the event by serving various soups to the community and assisting the raffle. The Sunrise Food Pantry feeds between 3,500 people to 400 people in Galt every single month. Having this fundraiser was crucial for the new building being built for the food pantry. We were grateful for the opportunity as it has an incredible experience to be able to serve and help such a fundraising financial part in our community and hope to continue serving this event moving forward.
Back to me. So basically, the Cow Waste Galt Youth Association meeting was when we went specifically, when we were invited by Ms. Clots, Lisa Clots, to the Cow Waste area or business. And here, we learned a lot about just like recycling and why it's so important to have different recycling bins. And here, we actually learned about, we got to provide our own input about how we want to bring recycling, food waste, and just like regular trash, trash cans into our own schools because I know at least at Liberty, we only really have one trash can that all of our food goes into. So the Cow Waste people really got our own input in this just to try and get a youth perspective ongoing and trying to help our world by reducing, reusing, and recycling. And we also got to see the facility where they just like dump all the recycling and they're sorting the trash. It was actually really fascinating to see.
This year, we also participated at the Egg Extravaganza where we fundraised using raffle baskets. Each commissioner was responsible for bringing a basket and we even got one donated by Cow Waste. We learned how to work together when we were putting together prizes, sorry, not prizes, prices, and making signs and making sure everything went smoothly. And although it was smaller than the years before, we all had a lot of fun and we got to kind of see more about the community. we all had a lot of fun and we got to kind of see more about the community.
So, this is my personal service project that I started back in September of 2024, and I went to a conference and created it. It was a living to serve plan. But the goal of this project was to revitalize an elementary school campus with the goal of just doing whatever the teachers needed, just doing what they needed specifically and asking and reaching out to them. So, my commissioners helped me with laying weed cloth around, doing various things. We planted trees. We helped pull tons of weeds out of the garden meds that were in this area. And, how's that thing work? Oh, okay. And then this was the before and after photo of one area, or the after photo on the right side. That's not even completely after it was done. That was just most of the progress that we had done. And then we pulled more weeds and we, and I also received a $375 grant from National FFA. And I used this grant to buy the trees and things that I planted in another area for the teachers.
And last but not least, I'd like to end off by reporting on our annual scholarships. This year, we took the decision to increase our budget by $1,000, creating four $500 scholarships and two $1,000 scholarships. And we were able to award graduating seniors at their senior award night. And we had what looks like a record number of applicants to our scholarship. Thank you all for your time. We can't thank you enough for giving us the funding and means to be able to serve our community in this way. We wouldn't be able to do this without you guys, so, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for each one of you. You did a great job. And you don't have to thank us. We want to thank you guys for everything you guys are doing. Obviously, you guys are very busy in the community and, and I think the money that we earmarked, I don't know if it was last year, we increased the budget for commissions like you guys, was, was money well spent for, for what you guys are able to do with that money. And, and, but you guys fundraised on, you know, on your own and a whole bunch, and all the scholarships and all the things you do, so, thank you so much. We appreciate all you. Council members, anyone want to say anything?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment on the, first of all, I would like to welcome and congratulation all the new student, the youth commissioner. And I also like to thank you, some of the youth commissioner. I know they already done the high school. They are leaving. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like, go ahead. You want to go? No? I didn't know if you wanted to say that.
Again, thank you. Like Mr. Sandu said, thank you for all of your service. It's great to see you take an interest in our community, and we know you'll, most of you will probably go off to college and out of our city, but we hope you come back and, and sit up here next time, so.
I just wanted to add that, you know, the importance of the youth commission, I've been a mentor for, I think, two terms now, and I can tell you, and some of you senior members that have been on for a while will know that we struggled to find applicants for the youth at one point. And now we have, you know, we have to actually decide who doesn't get to come on, whatever. That's a huge change, and what I think that shows, at least to me, is that you guys are having a, you know, a role model impact on the community, which is what I think is a big thing that you guys do. You don't doing it, you know, you may not realize how much you're doing it, but people see you and they see what you're doing, and, and so you, you are a role model for your peers and your constituents and your fellow students. So, I appreciate you guys doing all that, and hopefully, you know, the commission just continues to grow and, and flourish like it is, so, thank you again. All right. All right, next up, we have item H, which is going to be our public comment. Tina, if you could read our statement.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Kenley?
Good evening, council members. I'd like to recognize the way that Park and Rec cleans up after themselves. After they trim the street landscaping, they don't leave a mess. They pick up the clippings and everything, unlike the private landscapers who blow everything into the streets and blow it into the, underneath the bushes. Being a senior who uses a walker, I see problems from a different angle. Usually, we are slumped down a foot when we walk with a walker. So, basically, it's beneficial to the wheelchairs that landscaping at the corners, like the C Street corridor on D and Ford, that the, on the crossing point, that, that the three-foot height is maintained on the landscaping, because you can't really see somebody coming out at the crossing point. I take it slow, because when the light's flashing, it tells me somebody's, somebody's coming. And so, if it was lower to three feet, we can see somebody in a wheelchair, basically, somebody in a walker. Because a lot of us from the Galt place, we take walks daily, and so it'd be much safer for us. The flashing crossing signal at D and Ford in front of our building does slow down the traffic. But the people going to the Velvet Grill, they don't use the crosswalk. They just jaywalk. So, I mean, it's there for their use. And I'd like to thank the city for leveling the sidewalks and the improved brickwork leveling on C Street corridor. Now, basically, we don't hit it with our walkers and stuff, and it's clear sailing down the, because you guys did that within a week. We adjusted the bricks and grinded down the thing. I'm not picking up any more seniors off the street that, that hit it and fall on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And I do appreciate your, your compliments and your positive feedback. Thank you.
No more public comments.
All right. With that, we'll move on to item I, which is reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with Mr. Pratt.
I just had one that, that we don't do in June, LAFCO. So, we did not have a meeting, and that's the only thing between the last meeting and this one.
All right. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I did attend a couple of meetings. The first meeting I attended on June 13th, that was the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. That was a very normal meeting, but there's a couple of things we discuss on that. One thing, conduct a public hearing and approve the physical year 2025-2026 preliminary general budget. You know, the second thing, we, we formation of Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Budget Priority Ad-Hoc Committee. The reason we decide as a board to make an ad hoc committee because we know, all know the cable television, their budget going down for next two years. You know, the cable television, their business changed. Now, in these days, the people doing is a different kind of, you know, you have the streamline, so that's why they make a, a ad hoc committee to see how we prioritize the budget. So, they were, they appointed, I think, the six members, so they can make a decision next couple of years how we can change it. And the second meeting I attended on June 9th, that was Sacramento, South Sacramento Conservation Agency. There was a couple things, a couple agenda items. One is adopt physical year 2025-2026 budget. And on the budget, there was like in total expenditure was 21 million, and there was a total revenue was very close to 21 million. And I did ask the question to the objective director because she does not break down on the budget. And she promised me she can send me the breakdown budget, and I certainly, next meeting, when you bring, I bring back to here. The second thing, we did approve amended of economic planning system agreement. There's the annual fees update. That's why every city, every county, they do it according to CPI. So, there was, can be a little bit of fee increase on all new project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's the only two meeting I attend this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Reed?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I also have nothing.
All right, thank you. And I myself actually have nothing to report either since last meeting. So, with that, we'll move on to item J, which is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 8 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. I believe Ms. Hubert has a statement regarding item J2, which is the minutes of our last meeting.
With regards to the June 3rd minutes that were attached to your packet, there was an additional item that was accidentally added to the adjourned to close session that was carried over. It is going to be removed and posted correctly with that item removed.
All right, thank you for that clarification. So, is there any items on the consent calendar which to be removed by council?
I'd like to remove item 3.
Item J3, the ant pellet cleanup, okay?
And, Mr. Mayor, I don't like to pull the item J4 and J5. I might be have, just for the clarification from Mr. Griffin.
Okay, so we're going to pull items 3, 4, and 5? Is that correct?
Uh, no, I don't want to pull the item, but I just want to have the question.
Got you, okay. So, I'll need a motion to approve items J1, J2, 6, 7, and 8. Those items briefly are receive and file warrants for June the 5th, minutes of the regular meeting from June 3rd, item 6 is going to be the Galt Landscaping, Galt Landscape and Lighting District's engineers' report, item 7 is going to be the fiscal year 25, 24, 25 accounts receivable, write-off uncollected amounts, and item 8 is the City of Galt Investment Policy for fiscal year 25, 26. Do I have a motion to approve those items?
Mayor, may I? Since it sounds like the vice mayor is not intending for that to be pulled for separate action?
I'm just going to ask him.
You can have him ask the question now, and then you can do a motion for 6 and 7.
Okay, go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, on the item J4, Mr. Griffin, just on the, on the report, is, is say that the special tax increase by the CPI 1.5, then it's a 2.4. What's that difference? If you can explain to?
Yes, Vice Mayor, so the, the CFD has a minimum annual increase of 1.5%, regardless of what the CPI is. In years where the CPI exceeds 1.5%, as it did for this year, council has the option of choosing or selecting the actual CPI. And the CPI this year was approximately 2.4%. So, staff's recommendation is to go with the, the actual CPI noted for this year, which was 2.4%.
Okay, so that's mean council have the authority to, if we can do the increase from 1.5 or 2.4, but the staff decided to recommend for maximum tax increase on all the new parcels, right? That's a very right statement?
Yes, so again, the reason is, you know, that should we increase by less than the CPI in future years, those costs that this CFD covers, we will no longer have sufficient, we likely will not have sufficient revenues to cover those costs for parks, for landscaping maintenance, for the, for a CSD fire to provide fire services, for PD to provide police services, and for Public Works to provide street and other maintenance services. So, that's the reason we recommend keeping it at the CPI is so that we do not follow behind in the, the necessary revenue to provide these services.
Thank you. And this might be the same reason on J5, right?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor, that is correct.
All right. The reason I was asking, you know, the CFD, as, as a public, CFD 2020, these new development, these new houses, these new citizens can coming to this town, their property tax is much higher than we already have the houses there. That's kind of I want a clarification. I do understand. And we want to get the maximum tax increase whatever we can. Is that correct?
Yes, again, you're right. The council has purview to, to decide whatever rate adjustment they desire. But that's the rationale.
All right, I thank you. That's, I just want to make sure there's clarification, Mr. Mayor.
So, Frank, could I make a comment on that without pulling it, or do I need to?
It's really when you want to pull it for separate action. So, if you just want to make a quick comment, get something on the record and clarify. Now, if the questions turn into more questions, and then you're not, you know, you want to pull for separate action, you can still do that.
Well, I just would like to make a statement regarding it. Does anybody have any interest in pulling the item or no? Okay. Yeah, I just want to say, just want to piggyback on what the mayor said, just for clarification for the public. This CFD is for the new developments. These were formed as, really before any of the houses were even built and the new developments, and this only pertains to the new developments. The whole purpose of this was to really kind of correct what had been happening with the failing lighting landscape districts, which have no CPI escalator. Those have become insolvent, more or less, I guess, lack of a better term, and they don't make enough money to cover the costs. So, moving forward, it was, it was a very good idea for the council to create a new cities facilities district, which were not bound by the same restrictions of the lighting landscape districts. So, the, these are not taxes that are being put on people, existing neighborhoods. These are the new neighborhoods. These are the new developments that are coming online. I, for one, think that if the CPI is 2.4, that we should go with that, because if we don't, then I feel like over time, we're going to find ourselves in that same behind money-wise as we do before. So, I just wanted to, so for those watching at home or whatever, will understand exactly what we're talking about.
Just so, can we specify what those two areas are? I know we have them as CFD, you know, 2020-1 and 2020-2, but so everybody that doesn't understand what those numbers are.
Just a brief overview, give us some idea of some of those areas, what they are?
Yes, CFD 2020-1 consists of 8, 9, or 10, forget the exact number, newer subdivisions, starting with Dry Creek Oaks. I'm sorry, not Dry Creek, it's Veranda. It's either Veranda or Dry Creek Oaks is the first one. So, everything subsequent to Veranda, Dry Creek Oaks, those are the newer subdivisions that are part of CFD 2020-1. And then CFD 2020-2 is specific to Liberty Ranch.
Right, so we're talking about, Veranda was first, and then we have, I don't know if any of them are online since then.
Dry Creek Oaks, Cardoso.
Right, Dry Creek Oaks, yes.
Cedar Flats, yes, Catarina, a lot of those, several of these have now fully built up.
Yeah, and then all subsequent, and then all the newer ones, like Liberty Ranch. Liberty Ranch is specific to just -1, right?
So, Liberty Ranch has its own at CFD.
So, all the other ones that are coming online and the other places, those are going to be in the 2020-1. Correct. So, yeah. Okay. All right. So, I'll be looking for a motion to approve items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Do I have a motion to approve those? Moved by the vice mayor.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reed. Can I have a roll call on those items, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratt?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved 5 to 0. We'll now proceed with item J3, the ant pellet cleanup. Ms. Rodriguez?
I just have a couple clarifications and a change request. Let's start with the, the resolution. That's, I think, pretty easy. On the resolution, on, let me get to it really quick, just where it says, Section 1 authorizes an appropriation of $250,000. If we could change that to up to, I know you won't overspend. I get that and won't, if you have $250,000. I know you're not just going to go and spend $250,000. But I think that might make people a little, feel a little bit more comfortable if it just says up to. So, that's the easy part, if, if everybody agrees to that. And then I just want to do some clarification, because I personally received an email from a concerned person. In fact, I do want to ask, do we have a speaker on this?
Yes, we have public comment.
So, can we do that first and then, is that okay? Sorry. Yep, sorry.
Let's call them, let's call the public comment in a minute. I wanted to make some comments, too, first, before we do that.
Okay.
Well, you know what, actually, it, it's Actually, it, it's, it's fine. I think some of the questions are going to be redundant, but let's go ahead and just go to public comment.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for bringing this out for conversation. Sitting on your desk before you, I believe, is a half a million dollar question. And that question is, is the City of Galt going to pursue a debt that's owed to the citizens of Galt in the amount of about a half a million dollars? Half a million dollars. Think about it. You don't see it here, but I believe that's really where we're going with this. Okay? What we have is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of normal rent. We have a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of rent for occupying after the, after the lease was over, is, that's how I understand it. And we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of breach of contract because they did not leave the property in the condition which they received it in. In addition to that, but not stated in an amount, is we have city resources from Public Works cleaning it up. We have probably city time to go do the eviction hearing and whatever attorney's fees that might have taken in. So I, I add that up. That's about a half a million dollars. Okay? What I don't see in here is between the lines, it says, we're not going to pursue that. All right? I don't think it's time to say we're not going to pursue that. I think it's the time to get back to court, and I think that it's time to get judgments and get those in place. You can always go later and say, okay, we're going to stop pursuing this. But this is a big deal, a half a million dollars. When you think about all of the various items that comes before the council, this is a half a million dollars. And whether you get it or you don't get it, I think that you should be on the right side of history on this. Even if we don't get it, we should go down fighting, and it should be a message to those people that sign contracts with the City of Galt. When you sign a contract, you don't walk away from it, you don't leave a mess, a fire hazard, and you just don't do that. And so I think that that needs to be clarified. You can maybe get a clarification on the amounts of money there are. And then as a side for the accounting, I really think that we need to put this on the books, recognize it however it goes, and then I think it needs to be a part of the act for. So we see, we had a special event here, and I'm sure that our, our finance director knows how to do that and do the reporting on that. Half a million bucks, half a million. Think about what we can do with that, whether we get it or we don't. I do think that this is the right place to stand up and say pursue it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Any, any further comment?
So, oh, there's no more, sorry. So just not to put Ms. Buckman on the spotlight, because it didn't occur to me to even email this to you beforehand, but the gentlemen's ask about this being a special, something that should be on the act for, is that, do we do that? Is that a normal thing, these type of losses or events? Is that, or is that just part of the general?
It falls up to the fund level, so it's not, it's not going to be itemized, if that's what you're asking.
Right. So it's on, just in the general fund area, or I mean?
It's not, it's not the general fund.
I'm, yes, sorry. I misspoke. I am, yeah. But it will be in that fund.
Basket. In the impact fee fund.
In the impact fee. Right. So I, I just have a couple of comments regarding this. It sounds to me that a poor decision was made at the beginning of even leasing this to it. Seems like the company itself already was in question. They were running from their last place, and so, and I don't think anyone in this room was here during that and made that decision. So as far as, you know, did, where do we go, or how do we take care of this problem from, from in the future? Is we avoid, we do credit checks, we make sure that any tenants now we actually look I do, I am concerned about the cost of the cleanup and who it's, where it's going to have to go because having dealt with a company that had to deal with hazardous waste, even though it was soy, and then just basically household cleaners, but at a different amount than you would have in your household, there's a lot of costs associated with that, and I don't think we know what's in those barrels yet, so there's going to be a lot of testing. Those buildings are going to have to be tested before they go anywhere, so there's a lot of costs, and I think that should be our priority at this point. From the corporation, and I, I couldn't find in here, the, the people we rented to, is that a corporation? Was it a corp? Do we know?
I'm not sure of the legal status of the renter.
So if it's a corporation, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Splendario, but if it's a corporation or even an LLC, us going after them, all they have to do is declare bankruptcy and shut down and come up with another name. There's, and we will not get any money. We will waste money trying to go and try to get something, whether or not that scares anybody away. If, again, if they're a corporation, they pretty much just walk away from any debt anyway. Is that?
Yeah, that's generally true. You can, an exception to this is if you're able to pierce the corporate veil, or there's a personal guarantee. But I doubt there's a personal guarantee, and piercing the corporate veil is, you can prosecute, but that also is a considerable risk in time and money.
Yeah. So I, just because I've been there, done that, kind of, on the backside of it, and seen that, I just, I honestly don't, I think the city needs to move forward personally on this because we are going to need a focus to clean that area up and then move forward with, with that. So with that going forward, obviously, we have to do testing, so that would be my questions regarding, that's something that I think is, it could be done relative, you know, it could be done under the direction of the city manager that's, I do those kind of contracts, hazardous material, check, you know, to check into it, the testing, and that, that can be done relatively cheaply and quickly. So as soon as we find that out, then I think the city has the opportunity to move forward. So I'm okay with the way this is written, other than hopefully you agree with me that the resolution just to be added, the up to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and go from there. Those are my comments.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. President.
Since they pulled that item, I, I would like to some clarification on this issue. You know, they, they stopped paying in, back in, I think, summer in twenty twenty-four, right? And when they stopped paying, and we have a lease on their property, right, Mr. Griffin or the city manager, right? So when anybody stopped paying the rent, what kind of process, proactive process we use to on that day when somebody is scheduled to pay the rent? And when somebody don't pay the rent, what kind of process? Did we send that three-day notice? We did thirty-day notice or sixty-day notice? That's usually the notice with the residential or commercial property in a lease. So can you might be somebody explain how we end up, we well vector, if we know from summer of twenty twenty-four and we end up vectoring almost take a year, can you, somebody explain what kind of proactive process we use to do that? Please?
I'll give a start, and I'm going to look to our city attorney to, to add to what I'm elaborating on. So yes, the contract has a specific breach of contract clause, so there were a number of notices given to the owner listed in the contract for breach of contract and requirement to pay, to follow the terms of the contract before we would start the eviction process. You know, I'm going off memory. I want to say we sent out three to four notices before we then started more of the formal eviction process.
So the first notice you send, how many days after when they don't pay the rent? What might be? It's in a document, right?
It is. I'm, going off memory, I want to say we sent the notice out probably forty-five, fifteen to thirty days after they missed their first payment, and probably closer to fifteen.
Then after that, might be attorney, what's?
Yeah, I, I don't, obviously, I don't have the file right in front of me, so I'm going off the best of my recollection. I can just tell you that once we got notice of this and started discussing as a team, we sent out the required notices under the contract. You have to give them the notice of an opportunity to cure, and there were some other, we had some issues in terms of perfecting the mailing because we got some stuff bounced back, and so we wanted to make sure that they didn't show up at court and say, well, we didn't get effective notice. And then we did file the action in a reasonably prompt time, and then it, as it is with the courts these days, it just took a while to deal with. We had, and then once we did get an order from the court, the sheriff's office refused to enter the property because they felt like there was a piece of paper that the court had already authorized, didn't, wasn't good enough, so we had to go back to court, even though the court had authorized it. I think they probably faced liability in the past, the sheriff's office, so they were skittish. So anyways, the point was, it was reasonably prosecuted. And then during that time bef, before we filed the unlawful detainer ma, matter, we did kind of have a cost benefit analysis in terms of staff because it's going to, it's going to cost the, the city money, likely it won't recover to do it. So, but I think that, yeah, I mean, looking back, I guess it's almost a year, but it sure didn't feel that way. We're going through, we felt like we were reasonably prosecuting it as, with what we knew at the time. And what we didn't count on was how long it was going to take for the courts to enter the default judgment in the city's favor.
So, so that's me, that's why it's taking too long with the court and all these kind of things. Because I, but I'm, I'm talking about I, you know, since I have that kind of little bit experience, but you guys know much more special at, because when somebody does not pay the rent, usually court taking action very quick. They might be, they might be give some other reason why they don't pay the rent. If something with the owner as a city, we don't do the right thing, there's, then court is like gives you that much time, but usually, you, most likely, you know, if somebody don't the, pay the rent, his court is very proactive on that, and then they send the notice to the sheriff and sheriff take care of that. You know, my thing is, is a lot of money. This money is, is, is like in this city, this is a public money. And I believe all my consider very careful when we use that kind of money. We want to make sure we use the right procedure, take care of as soon as possible. And I, I certainly know the staff doing an excellent job. They might be proactive, whatever actions you do, but now we end up that much losing, and then they leave all the stuff, you know, all these hazards. And one, my question, I, I like to bring to the public, and I bring this before, these people, and I, I know these people personally, and a lot of people, they called during last couple of year, that place, even before they pay the rent, they make a mess on that. You can see, when you driving through, you can see from the outside. I see the first picture, they left a mess. These picture was, if you see before there, there was a no fence, even the fence was broken. You can see from the outside, I, I don't know, the city from court enforcement or somebody who, who, Public Work, they was kind of think they looking before that because when we rent the property, this is a city property, we need to, we want to make sure, you know, there is, there is a clause and might be on a lease. If we give the notice to the whoever lease, we have the authority to inspection. If they may notice twenty days, thirty days, or sixty days, it, it should be in a lease. I'm not, I don't read the lease. I don't have the lease, but most likely basic, you can go and inspect the, their property. If you feel something, they're going to make a hazard, whatever purpose, they lease that or they using something else. So, and the other thing is, last thing, as my other colleague said, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. You know, I know, we, we prove lot of thing. I have lot of trust on my staff. But like in two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, did you staff, did like in, get a different kind of contractor? What will be the cost? Two hundred and fifty, just blankly say, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar? I like to see something comparison, get couple beds. I know, we say the staff, staff might, we don't have a time, diff, different kind of, so see what, wherever we can end up. And the last thing, I, I would like to make a comment. I know this money will not go from the general fund, but even all other funds, council and all we responsible for them, it is come from the city. Even this general fund we using day to day is most likely, like in council and staff is focused on a general fund, but other funds is also city. So I like to make these comment, if something we can do it, and otherwise, I'm agree with staff, whatever they make a decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, sir. I was actually thinking about pulling this right when Bonnie said it, because I had a lot of questions that I sent to the city manager about it. I have concerns about us not trying to get the money back. Right? This, this was a company that entered into a contract with the city. They knew what they were getting themselves into. They knew the amounts that they needed to pay, and they decided not to. So now we have to turn around and spend some of our money to clean up their mess on top of the money that they already owe us. So I'm along the lines myself of making a motion to approve the two hundred and fifty thousand, but remove writing off the hundred and twenty-six and still pursuing that.
Okay. Well, I.
Mayor, if I, if I may add a, a comment or two. You know, we certainly learned a lot about pallet storage over the last handful of years. I do want to respond to just, you know, ignoring, you know, the money that's owed to us. I mean, we do, even whatever happens with the council motion coming forward, we still have the ability to send this debt to collections, and we do think that's like the best option for us. I agree with the city attorney that we have to evaluate the time and money spent on pursuing, you know, legal remedy to try to recoup our funds. I think there's less costly approaches for us to do that. So if, you know, the Councilman Reed's motion carries forward, I think that supports, you know, what we would prefer to do anyway. I think the write-off gives us the ability to do that in the event that the collections fails.
Well, be, I was just going to ask a question for that. So if, the way that it's read is if we write off the hundred and twenty-six thousand, we're not pursuing it any fa, any further past that, we're not going to send them to collections, we're just going to say, oh, that hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is gone.
So considering that, I support your motion.
I'm, I'm asking, if, if we were to approve it the way that it's written right here, the, it says authorize the staff to write off a hundred and twenty-six thousand in uncollected accounts. That means it's not, we're not going to do anything past that, we're not going to send them to collections, we're not going to try to get back any of that money.
But that says?
Right?
In uncollectible, doesn't mean that they can't go try to collect it?
Right. That's, that's, that's just what I'm trying to get clarification on. That's all.
Well, I think the verbiage uncollectible means that after, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and Penny, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the write-off is, is purely for an accounting purpose, for the books. I don't think it means that we are legally prohibited from doing what we can to make that separate decision later to try to recoup that. Obviously, if, if, if we did make that decision later, we would have, we would have, we would have a bit of revenue at that point because we've written out that, off that amount. But I, I don't think we would be legally prohibited. But I, I don't think we'd be legally prohibited from pursuing that through some separate action just because we written it off for accounting purposes internally.
You're right, I don't, I don't think it would prohibit us to, but I'd rather just revise the motion and leave it on the book so we can try to collect it through collections and then write it off if we can't do that, if that's
Okay.
If that's the motion.
So let, I'll revisit my, my motion. I, my motion is to approve the two hundred and fifty thousand. Up to, thank you, up to two hundred and fifty thousand. And then remove that other, uh, section about the hundred and twenty-six and pursue, uh, any damages against the lessor or the tenant to replace any, any and all funds that we can from our expenditures.
So before I take a second on your motion, Mr. Reed, I just wanted to actually, what I would, what I would ask if you would please allow is if myself and Councilmember Pratt can speak on this before anybody makes motions about what they want to do, because none of us have spoken yet, so.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Pratt, did you want to go or do you?
Go.
Okay, so, uh, first I want to thank Mr. Wenzel for, uh, you know, your comments and reaching out to us. I did speak to him on the phone as well, he did email the council. And I did have a conversation, Mr. Reyes, a little background on this, the, this, the decision to, to rent to this, this, this bad tenant, we'll call it, was, uh, you know, was pushed by a former department head who's no longer here. I know for certain that our assistant city manager, Mendez, and our current city manager, Mr. Reyes, were adamantly against renting to this person and, and were favorable to another tenant. But it wouldn't work out that way because of prior leadership, but, uh, that is all under the, water under the bridge. But what I, I, I look at this in a little bit different way, and first let me ask you questions. So, Mr. Griffin, we've collected three hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars in rent on this property since April of two thousand eighteen, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so the hundred and twenty-six thousand uncollected is basically the months that they occupied the property that we didn't collect that, right? So potential, that was potential money we could have collected, we didn't, didn't actually come out of our pocket, it just didn't go into our pocket. I'm just looking at a different perspective here. The hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in the, uh, other damages, which is daily rental value, two hundred sixteen dollars per day, five hundred twenty-two, this is also. So what I'm getting at is a hundred and twenty-six thousand and a hundred and thirteen thousand is not actual, it's lost revenue that the taxpayers could have collected, but it wasn't, we didn't actually lose that money out of our funds, we just didn't collect it. It would have been the same as if the property sat vacant for all that time, just want to state that. What I'm, what I'm looking, what I'm thinking here is that, and again, I have a question about the two fifty, so I'll revisit that in a minute of the cleanup cost. But we collected three hundred and seventy-two thousand, so we're actually using the tenants on money to clean up their mess, which is unfortunate that we have to do that. But if you subtract the two hundred fifty thousand cleanup, if it does cost that much from the two hundred and seventy, or the three hundred and seventy-two thousand that we did collect, we still, we still collected a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of rent over seven years, which is seventeen thousand dollars a year. Doesn't sound like a lot, but we didn't, we didn't lose money to the tax, I mean, we lost some potential money, but we didn't, what I'm looking at, so we still brought money in, we bought this property for a purpose, we decided, well, until we use it for the interchange, why don't we just rent it out? So we did that, didn't work out as well as we wanted to, but we did collect some money, or we could, it could have just set vacant, I mean, we could have just that too. There's a saying called throwing good money over bad, and I feel like pursuing this in court for, uh, obviously this person is, has already had one default judgment, and now we're gonna pursue the fact that we probably won't get anything out of this, or we're gonna spend, that will be money that we will be spending out of our pocket, and that will be money lost. So every dollar we spend trying to chase this guy, outside of collections, which I agree on, is gonna be, in my opinion, throwing good money over bad. I feel like if I have a, a rental and my, you know, my tenant's bad and I have to victim and I go through that whole process, now he's gone, there's only a certain amount of effort I'm gonna go through before I just need to move on and get a new tenant in there and start collecting money, because that's where, that's what the real value is, wasting more time and doing all that and trying to chase around these, this shady person that's probably never gonna give us any money or we're gonna collect, to me is just a waste of time. I say we send it to collections, I agree with Mr. Reed. But again, I, I think we're, you know, I don't think, with saying that we're, there's a half a million dollar decision, it, it really makes it sound like we're, we're making a decision and we're gonna, we're just, we're just gonna kiss off a half a million dollars, and, and that's really not what we're doing. So with that, the two fifty, where, where did we get that number from? Did we have a company come in and give us that number, or what is it?
Yes, so let me answer that question. At this point, we have not started the process of putting together a bid package. So the two hundred fifty thousand dollars was staff's estimate, and we've talked to some contractors, for example, I talked to Benton Fence to replace the fence and gate, fences and, the fence and the gates alone is over seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, so this is not just cleanup, this is actually, uh, this would actually be investment back in the property to ready it for future tenant or something.
And, and then I do want to toot staff's own horn just for a minute. To date, you know, street staff has removed over seventeen hundred loose pallets, um, a hundred and fifty component pallets, and removed a bunch of ninety-four tires, six vehicle batteries, and worked with code enforcement and C F, C S D fire on inspection and identifying what is most critical for fire safety. So, uh, our staff has done a lot of work to get it from where you saw it, where the pictures were attached. As, that was the day of the eviction to where it's at now.
Yeah, the
I, I agree, it's still
The pictures are terrible.
It's still a, it's a less terrible site, but it's still very, and it's still very terrible condition.
So this, so we will, so the two fifty is just, is just an estimate so that you could come to the, the council and say, this is what we think we're gonna spend up to. But as we see, a lot of times you come back and we find out that it could actually be far less, we don't know. I mean, it could be more, but in my, and my hunch is it's gonna be less once it comes back, that's just what I'm thinking. Especially if we've already started doing some of the legwork with our own people, so, um.
Yeah, I think the biggest unknown is the cost of removing all of the, I call them shredded, uh, pallets that are in that pile. It's, you know, roughly a hundred and twenty feet by a hundred and eighty feet by about ten feet tall.
This is seven
And, and so it's the total property, seven point six acres, it's broken up into five parcels. The pile, that pile of shredded pallets takes up almost half of a two acre parcel.
Yeah, so we, when we took, when we bought this and Housman Auction Company was the company that was there prior to us, we didn't really go in and do a lot of, we didn't really do anything significant of investment into money into property. Like, we didn't go up and put a brand new fence up, all that. We, these tenant came in, we had an old fence that had been there for years, I remember. So the fence you're talking about doing now, this would be us improving the property moving forward, but we didn't do all that in the beginning. To my knowledge, we didn't, I mean, I was, I came in just after this was rented, I don't remember us doing anything like that.
That was before my time.
Okay, yeah, I know it was, so, okay.
There were no improvements.
There was no, I didn't think so. Does anybody, and I, and this is not relevant to my question, but I, I'm just curious, does anybody have any ballpark idea of what we pay on that property and, and property taxes every year, what we have to pay?
I don't believe we pay any property tax since
Oh, okay.
Since it's city owned.
All right.
I, I believe city does not pay, but they bought the property, I think one point five or one point six, that, uh, Mr. Venkler, that's what his idea.
Okay.
Can I, might help with that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So, just to give a little perspective, when, um, I moved out of the Galt Herald building, um, total, what was spent, and this is probably what the new owner, to include the new owners, because he had to clean up some, he had to take that press out. I can guarantee between the two of us, we spent well over two hundred fifty thousand dollars for one building, for a hun- a thou- a ten thousand square foot building. So, um, especially because there's hazardous, there's possible hazardous and, um, another cleanup that has to happen with those two built, the, at least the one building on that. The other perspective I can kind of give you is I do these kind of contracts for the state, and this is, it doesn't surprise me at all. This is pretty par for the course.
Well, again, so I would like to reiterate that, you know, obviously, you know, things happen, we couldn't have first in the future. Can we pick a better tenant next time? Absolutely, I think that's, we're gonna do that, right? And I, and I would hope that, um, you know, and we do have a potential tenant, I think it's a good tenant, but I would hope that, you know, that decision would, um, you know, we can, we can all share in the, in that decision-making, so we can all be culpable of who that is. But, um, but I think, look, and looking back, I mean, you know, we collected some money on it, not as much as we had hoped to, but I'm sure in the heck don't want to spend, you know, real money from attorney's fees and, and everything else on top of, first, I think we, we move on, we, we deal with this, and, um, we send it to collections, and if we're lucky and we get anything, great, but I don't think we should hold our breath on that. And, um, so I would support a motion, Tim, uh, if, uh, I'll let Mr. Pratt speak, obviously, before we do that, but I, I would support, you know, making sure there's some verbiage in there about the collections. But I think, uh, and I, we will see the bids for the cleanup, obviously, so we're just gonna approve up to two fifty. But we're actually gonna see those bids, so we won't be, we will have a chance to say yes or no when the actual real number comes back to us, right?
So the city purchase policy requires anything over two hundred thousand dollars come back to council. And that includes if we break it up into multiple parts, so if we were to break it up into a fence contract, you know, a pallet removal contract, if that aggregate's over two hundred thousand dollars and it comes back to council. If we are lucky, and let's just say we spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we could take it back to council, if that's council's desire, but purchasing policy does not require us to do that.
Is that even if we modify this to say up to two hundred and fifty thousand?
That, that's just the budget appropriation, so if it's a public work project that's under two hundred, under the U P C C A A in our purchasing manual, the, the staff can let the contract on its own. That being said, if you want this to come back to council, we can bring it back to council.
So to, so to clarify, if we approve the up to two fifty, you guys go out and bids, as long as those bids aren't over two fifty, it's not coming back to us, correct?
As long as it's under two hundred.
Okay, okay. All right. Mr. Pratt, did you have any comments?
I would just say, well said, Mayor.
All right, so, uh, we have a motion on the floor, would you like to clarify?
Mr. Mayor
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank you for the staff for the clarification, you know, I will support that, uh, agenda item, but I thank you for, uh, Mr. Griffin, thank you for the, I just wanted to see what the process you guys do, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Reed to, um, approve as written with some verbiage added or if it's even necessary that we will pursue collections, is it, what, what was the decision, this decision on that part? Do we need to put that on there?
It's his motion.
And, and I'm gonna have Frank help me out if I mess this up. The, the res, or, my motion is to approve the two hundred and fifty thousand
Up to.
Up to two hundred and fifty thousand. Re- remove the, uh, the verbiage about writing off the hundred and twenty-six and then adding the part where we're gonna pursue them in collections. That would be
But collections and not, not court, not
Correct.
Not spend, we're not gonna spend any additional money like attorney's fees or whatever.
So your motion would be approve the resolution, amending section one of the resolution to say up to two fifty, and amending section two of the resolution to, instead of saying to write off that one hundred and twenty-six thousand or whatever it is, to pursue recovery through collections.
Correct.
And the staff will come back at a later date, should it be uncollectible for a write-off.
Correct.
Okay.
Can it say, can it, can it say collections only, I just want to be clear that that's Would that be okay? Okay.
Yes.
Collections only?
Okay, well, with that, I will second Mr. Reed's motion, if there's no further discussion.
I just have a question, sorry. Do we do our own collections, or do we just sell them off?
We contract them out.
That's what I, okay.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Reed, a second by the mayor, if there's no alternate motions being made, I'll ask for a roll call.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratt?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes, my motion is approved to five to zero. All right, moving on to item K, scheduled notice of public hearing. Item one is gonna be the midterm budget and the related items. Ms. Buckman?
Asha Carlos will be presenting tonight the midterm budget.
Welcome, Mr. Salario, see, we got you a fancy name badge tonight and everything.
I appreciate that, thank you, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Farmer and members of the council, everyone present. What I'll be presenting to you today is the midterm budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Our agenda for this presentation includes an overview of the budget process, our projected fund balances after this budget, benefit cost adjustments, citywide personnel request, incentive and merit increases, and the meat and cheese, which is revenue and expenditure projection updates. You may recall, this budget was adopted as a biennial budget on, back in June eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four. In March, we came back with adjustments to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. And what you will see today are the proposed adjustments to the upcoming fiscal year budget. Big picture view of this midterm budget and what it means, um, citywide. We're looking at a balanced budget for general fund and special revenue funds. We do anticipate use of fund balance in some of the, uh, utility and impact fee funds. So that drives an overall use of, net use of fund balance of twelve point two million dollars in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The use of fund balance in this budget is appropriate, um, in, for example, with the, um, utility funds, you'll notice that we are utilizing fund balance for the, in the storm drain, uh, water, wastewater funds. These are legitimate uses of fund balance that are currently, um, built into the rate model for utilities, for water, wastewater, to comply with upcoming and existing, uh, state mandates as well as with, um, ongoing maintenance of these facilities. Similarly, in the, uh, impact fee funds, you'll notice use of fund balance, these are funds being utilized for projects that the city, um, proposed or promised to construct in result, as a result of, uh, new construction. So when developers come forward to us and say, we're gonna build this much, we say, that's gonna create an impact to the community, therefore, we need to do A, B, C, D and collect these, um, fees from you. Now, what you see on these impact fee funds is the city enforcing and making use of those funds for the projects that it said it was going to, to bring forward. Any questions on the big picture view, I will get to the details on what's, what's included in each one of those funds?
If any council member has questions during his presentation, just jump in, you don't have to ask me to speak, just go ahead.
Benefit and, and cost adjustments here, um, you probably remember a similar slide on the mid-year budget. These represent, um, new benefit rates provided to the city during the summer. So when medical rates become available, uh, to the city, that's past budget adoption around the month of September or so. When we adopted the budget, we were looking at different rates, now that we have the actual rates that we're currently paying, we've updated the budget. Keep in mind that this summer we will receive new rates, and if these are higher than what we budgeted, uh, we will come back at a mid-year budget with any adjustments. New position requests, this budget includes a request for two new public works maintenance, um, worker positions for the, uh, water division of the public works department, and these have a cost of ninety-eight, ninety-nine thousand dollars. The positions are required, um, by, or requested by the department to stay in compliance with new regulations related to fire hydrant testing and inspections. If there's any questions, uh, Mr. Griffin can answer.
You know, that's, uh, I have just the information, uh, Mr. Griffin, you said that you needed two more position for the fire hydrant to testing, right? That's a new state law?
Correct, that is a new state law, and that also, that was part of, um, very briefly alluded to by fire chief when he gave his presentation on fire safety, and then one of the areas that we're deficient on as a city is not sufficiently inspected and tested on hydrants. Now, the staff will be doing more than testing the fire hydrant Now, the staff will be doing more than testing the fire hydrants, but that's going to be a good chunk of their effort. There's traffic control involved, there's all of the notifications and paperwork and the physical effort. But that is one of their, that would be one of their primary tasks, is to perform the testing, perform the fire flow testing, all the new requirements that go, that are part of the fire code.
So I have a question about that. How much of the fire hydrant testing and flowing does the city do compared to how much does the fire department do?
We do not do any inspection or testing of our hydrants at this time. And any fire flow testing that's been done in the past has been done by the fire district, but those are very rarely performed, only where asked for by new development projects. So this would require, the, the new guidelines will require us to do, to perform more testing than we, than is currently performed in support of new development projects.
Right, so I mean, I guess my question is, are we going to require them to do any of it? Because other jurisdictions that I've been in, the fire department takes part, part of that responsibility to help relieve some of the stress on the public works.
We've had challenges in the past with them operating our system, and then causing damage to our system when they're done. Could we use them? Yes, we could. That is not our recommendation. Our recommendation is have our own staff who are properly licensed to operate the water distribution system, perform those tests. And again, it gives it, it gives a water system team also flexibility in providing other maintenance needs in addition to the fire flow and the fire hydrant testing and inspections.
If I may add too, I think some cities that have their own fire department do have the fire department assist with testing. But in the case where you have an outside agency that provides the fire service, they don't, we have ownership of the fire hydrant, so it's not, it's, it's really ours to test.
And we don't have, there's not, there's no, there's no verbiage in our, in our contract with C S D that, that says that they're supposed to be doing the testing.
That's correct.
Just want to clarify. These two positions, Mr. Griffin, the cost for both the positions combined is 99,845? Just want to clarify.
Is that with benefits and everything?
Yeah, so, so that's with benefits and everything, it costs 100. So basically, we're looking at like 50,000 per, per position. That's with benefits and all the stuff that, that's included with that. Yep. So these are, these are, for lack of a better word, these are kind of entry level-ish positions, right?
Public works maintenance worker, one.
Worker one, right, got it. I should have just looked at that, yeah, okay.
So the other thing, Mr. Griffin, are the states required to do these fire hydrant every year? Or what their requirement, did you already get their instruction, or just?
We, I'm going off memory, I want to say we have roughly 1,000 hydrants in our system. We're required to test every.
Other year or?
Four years, I believe. So, you know, we're looking at four or five years, so we're looking at 200, 250 tests per year. And then, but we also need to go in physically and visually inspect every hydrant. So there's an annual inspection, and then there is the, the fire flow testing, which is every four or five years.
Thank you.
Other requests in the personnel area include reclassifications of several positions. First one is a reclassification of the administrative analyst for economic development to an administrative analyst two. That has a cost difference of 1,400. That's a cost to the general fund. The second is the reclassification of the administrative analyst one in the public works department to administrative analyst two. Cost of 3,800. It's a shared cost with the general fund, utility funds, transit, and the lighting and light skip district funds. The community development senior planner has been recommended for reclassification to principal planner with a cost of 13,000. These, the cost of this position is shared between the general fund and two of the development impact fee funds. Finance has three requests. The first one is for an administrative assistant.
Hunter.
I would look to my colleague.
Okay, sorry, didn't know if I said that's right. That's right.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. So this would be a reclassification of our current senior planner, Kristin Bits, to a principal planner. Kristin has been with the city for nine years, started as a permit technician. And she clearly has assisted me in the past year on the planning side of things. And so the difference really would be some of the more, more detailed planning projects that she's working on, specifically related to commercial development. And we have a lot of requests for different applications related to housing, potentially some annexations, and those would be things that she would be managing. And so that really is the difference. It's more of the high-scale projects on the planning side that she would be managing moving forward, and on the commercial side.
So I know sometimes, I was going to say typically, but I don't think it's typical all the time. But in many, in, in some instances in the past, we've had some, we've done some reclassifications because we had people actually doing work at the other level, but they were in the lower position. So they were actually doing, they had, they had, were starting to do, or had been for some time, doing some of the workload that was for the, for the other classification, but not being paid for. And so that's why we would do that. Would that be the case in this here, based on what you said about?
Yes, the position right now is really high level in terms of, you know, my background is not planning, and so she's been the one that we've relied on to really take on that load as it relates to some of the larger projects, specifically some of the commercial projects that have been in the application process lately, and handling environmental documents and consultants as it relates to some of these planning documents that we're processing.
So, so this is not a scenario, we're not going to be backfilling, are we going to be backfilling the senior planner position? Or is this just more about the level of work that she's doing is more in line with the classification of the principal planner as exists in our hierarchy right now?
Yes, you are correct in the latter. She is definitely handling more of the more advanced planning projects. The position will not be backfilled. There's no plan to do that.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you can help answer this, Penny, but my next question will be on the three finance positions. Could you just briefly explain for the council about these position upgrades? Or what they are, kind of, just a quick?
Yeah, we have the two accounting assistant twos, those are the easier to explain. They're, they're both working at a higher level classification. They provide all of the training and support to the lower level staff members, even though they're the same level at this point. And they are doing the higher level jobs. The executive assistant request, we are requesting because we've had the opportunity. Our current administrative assistant is retiring. And we're, we had, I guess we had several executive assistants upgraded last year. We would like ours as well. Our plan is to use them for contracts, council reports, developing policies and procedures, and providing support to not only me, but the budget manager and the accounting manager, and also helping with budget development.
Okay, these numbers, the cost differences, those are per year numbers?
Per year.
So 35 per year is the, for, is just one of the, okay. Just wanted to make sure we understand this. All right, that's all the questions I have at this moment.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly, you know, that position with the senior planner and the principal planner, that job is really, she's doing from long time. And I certainly will support, you know, that job to be high level because she's doing a lot of, especially this year, last year, she have almost doubled the work she was doing. The other position, Penny, I have a question. You know, you're doing the upgrade, there's the two position. How long they're doing, you said they're doing, they're going to upgrade work, that's why we, right? And how long they're doing the same thing, but they're doing up? I know you are a new, but just for a busy long time? Or they just start doing the more work just recently, a year ago, a year knowledge, or six months?
It's been going on for some time for both of them as far as the training. They're the experts, so they train all of the lower level, or the new staff coming in, even though they're the same level. They're the go-to person for all of those staff members as well. That's been happening for quite some time. But then our accounting assistant that handles payroll now, he has taken on a lot of the duties of the actual payroll manager, which is another classification up, but we are keeping it at that senior level so that we don't bump them up to another level.
Thank you.
It's been going on for a while.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
I'm going to make a statement, and I'm hoping Tricia will back me up on this. These, what are they, six positions? I don't think this, I mean, although it definitely talks about the individuals in those positions. But I think because we're so small, that's why we can talk individually. But the, the actual positions are, regardless of who's in the seat, are doing these upgraded activities, or training, or whatever they're doing. And so we just need to get the actual positions that we require someone coming in. They're going to look at these titles when they're applying and say, oh, well, I've been a principal planner. I can do that. I wouldn't apply for a senior planner. I would apply for a principal planner because that's more the, what is in, out there, outside of GALT's borders. So I think we're trying to just come up, grow up, and be like everybody else, right?
Yes, ma'am, and this is also in line with our succession plan as well.
So kudos for all those employees who are doing, going well over and above what they should be doing at that existing title. But, you know, we need to get the proper titles in there so that when someone moves up and we have to fill in and hire or move up someone that they're, they know what kind of work they're actually going to have to do.
I would like to also add that, you know, Chris and I have had conversations about some of this stuff for some time, and I really look at this, these here positions, specifically, this is more like some housekeeping, really. You know, there's been some positions where people have been working under class for a long, long time, some more than others, but some for a long time. And, you know, there's just, for whatever reason, we just never felt comfortable, or maybe it was, you know, didn't have the money, which has been the case in recent years. You know, back when we first came on council, the vice mayor and I, you know, we went from freezing positions to, and so a lot of these people had hung on, you know. So this is, some of this stuff is long overdue, honestly. And so I'm glad that we can, you know, afford to make these changes in the budget. And so I just wanted to state that, that this is, this is not something that's being sprung. At least for me, I've known about some of this for a long time, so.
Yeah, Mayor and council, if you don't mind me adding that all of these movements are part of a series in that professional class. So you can see each of them share a, you know, basic title, but just different number or title after, or descriptive title afterward, like analyst one to analyst two, senior planner to principal planner. And one of the benefits, one of the many benefits of working in GALT is this is a career, you know. And so this is all part of the career advancement of the positions. So they must meet like all the criteria of education, experience, in addition to doing the actual work. So this is just part of the natural progression of the individual's career in those positions.
If there's no other comments, you can proceed, Mr. Salario.
Other salary and benefit adjustments throughout the budget include incentives and merit increases. These are basically incentives or recognitions for staff that are currently assigned at the various departments that have accomplished education requirements, completed certifications that assist or further develop their professional development within the department, and allow them to do more and beyond the duties that they were originally hired for. Similar schedule was presented during the mid-year budget. Again, this is a, an attempt to bring these additional merit increases to the two-year budget in the second part of the, the budget.
Mr. Salario, I know we talk about this a lot with our, well, this conversation's happened a lot outside of these, these meetings here, but these, these, these figures, when it comes to this kinds of stuff, just for the public to know, the stuff is, is, we, we look at other agencies, we look at other municipalities, and we see what the standard is for, you know, someone being bilingual, or someone having, you know, a certain class license to operate certain machinery, or whatever. These, these certifications, merit increases, these are, we try, we try, GALT tries to, when we can, bring these into, so that we're competitive, right, with other, with other cities. We don't always do it, but this is what this is, we, I just want to make sure we don't just come up with these numbers out of, out of the thin air.
Correct, this is a, in recognition of those staff that further pursue their, their education, that strive and take courses and require training or hours of work to earn a certain type of certification.
Right, but I was saying, these are, but this is, if we were to look at other cities, we would find, these are in line with what's. Thank you.
Next, we'll be looking at the revenue and expenditure adjustments by fund. The general fund anticipates an increase in revenue of 3.3 million dollars. The bulk of the revenue comes from grant proceeds, a transportation grant received as reimbursement or to support the purchase of the transit center. The increase is followed by an increase in property tax revenues of 420,000 and interest income, as well as a housing grant received or anticipated to be received for housing projects in the city, as well as a tobacco grant received by the police department to support police operations.
So we've, just for the public to catch, so we've seen a decline in sales tax revenue of 192,000.
That is correct. That decrease is primarily the impact of current situation with the economy, driven by it, it, basically the effects of the federal government policy and current changes that drive the cost of gasoline and other products out there that generate sales tax for, for the city.
Yeah.
To clarify, though, that is, it's 190,000 less than what we anticipated.
Right.
That is correct.
Right.
These are changes to the originally anticipated revenues.
I mean, typically, when we project numbers, we're looking at, we go off, go back a certain time, and we'd say, well, we did this last year, the year before, so we're anticipating. But obviously, when there's downturns and things like right now, what I, what I hear in, in GALT is, you know, we already have massive sales tax leakage, but, but what I'm hearing is, you know, people, just stuff is so expensive now, people are, are, you know, trying to cut back on eating out because of the cost. There's all kinds of things. And so I think that, I think this number is reflecting of that, honestly. So at least that's what I see in here, you know, about town.
That is correct. These sales tax projections, we hire H D L to provide supportive advice. They do a very thorough analysis of what's going on in the economy and what's driving. They also audit our sales tax revenues and provide these projections for us. And as you said, Mr. Mayor, these sales tax projections are taking into account what we see with, you know, expenditures in construction, sales of autos and gas prices. we see with, you know, expenditures in construction, sales of autos and gas prices. Similarly, we anticipate a reduction in the safety sales tax and franchise fees. Franchise fees are the result of a reduction in our franchise fees or our solid waste hauler built into the latest contract that was not part of the, adopted to your budget. On the expenditure side, we anticipate an increase in appropriations in the elected officials department, which includes city council, city clerk, city attorney and city treasurer.
Are we on a different slide now? Or is this the same? There we go.
Didn't click hard enough. Apologies. The bulk of the increase in the elected officials department is, includes an increase in professional services for legal services, salary and benefit adjustments, which includes a part-time office assistant in the city clerk's budget, unfunded pension liability, the cap-to-cap conference and the cost for the documented repository system.
I just wanna go back one slide, I'm sorry. Just wanna clarify for the public that some of these, like when it names city treasurer, this doesn't mean the city treasurer himself got $962 more dollars. This is just the office of things that involve with that office or that, same thing with the, the city council. Now, the city attorney, that's a different subject, I mean, that one. No, but I mean, if we incur different, if we incur unforeseen legal costs or things that we're dealing with, obviously, that, I mean, that number of the attorney does fluctuate, that's kind of a moving target, but the council, the treasurer, these are just having to do with their departments. This is not, the council, we didn't see $20,000, like, I just wanna clarify that. People, it's, 'cause it's misleading when you read it, so.
Mr. Solario, can you go back that slide, general fund revenue adjustment? You know, that the last night total revenue fund adjustment, it looks like $3.3 million something is more revenue, right? It looks very good. But I, I, I would like to clarify on that, but the revenue 2.6 in the first line, that, that's why it looks very good, right?
Yes.
Otherwise, 2.698, that's, is not a revenue, that transfer.
It's a one-time revenue transfer from Fund 10, which is our grant fund. We've previously received the funding as funding source for the purchase of the transit center. Unfortunately, when the purchase occurred, the city was faced with the cyber security attack and, which delayed the, the grant claiming process. Long story short, we've received the funding and now it's going.
That's a reimbursement.
A reimbursement that's going into the general fund.
That, that's funding, we have it, but we just wanna use on that.
Right, it's for previously expensed items.
So the real revenue increase is more like 700 and some thousand?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Without, if you don't factor in that item.
Thank you.
The city administration department budget anticipates an increase in appropriations of $253,000, which includes salary and benefit adjustments, unfunded pension liability and professional services in the economic development, city manager, human resources, IT and code enforcement divisions. The bulk of the salary and benefit adjustments include a new position that was approved in the fiscal year 2425 budget for the code enforcement division.
Right, so on the city manager line item, that's, again, not for an individual, this is for the city manager department because we had, we brought some positions and put them under the city manager office, so that represents those numbers, correct?
That is correct.
But the savings in the economic development department was because that person was shifted to a different department, correct?
Right, the, the salary savings of the economic development department are a result from the vacancy in the economic development director position.
Right.
Yeah, not from the shift of the code enforcement, is what you're saying?
Right, but it's because someone moved over to a different department and left that vacant, the management position.
Right, yeah.
The non-departmental budget includes an increase in appropriations of $183,000 to cover the repairs and renovation of the municipal services center, the police department, and it also includes salary and benefit adjustments, and adjustment in unfunded pension liability, professional services and CD special events. Also included is a reduction in the transfer to the parks fund. We will look at more details on the parks fund in the next few slides. Finance department is anticipated to experience savings of $10,000 net of adjustments in salary and benefits, professional services, bank fees and unfunded pension liability.
Way to sharpen your pencil, Penny, thank you.
The police department will experience an increase in appropriation of $311,000, which is composed of salary and benefit adjustments, unfunded pension liability and net operational cost of $80,000 for animal control services, background investigator, fitness program, homeless encampment cleanup, multi-factor authentication programs, repairs to telecommunications infrastructure, the Axon program and the elimination of a unmarked vehicle. Community development department is requesting an increase in appropriation of $345,000, which includes a $211,000 appropriation for a housing project, as mentioned in the revenue categories. We've received a grant of equal amount and the department is going to make use of those grant funds, so that 211,000 of the 345 are for that project and are being 100% reimbursed. The rest of the cost increases include a part-time office support, plans for accessory dwelling unit plans, training, uniform and supplies, inspection services, unfunded pension liability and other bank and professional dues. The Department of Public Works will be having savings of $11,000 in this upcoming year. This includes salary and benefit savings, which also bring down the unfunded pension liability costs and includes the reprioritization of the fuel master program, the, the acquisition of a new lease for a copier and software subscriptions, as well as sliding increase in uniform costs.
Where's that salary and benefits savings come from? Is that an empty position or?
It's been the result of staff turnover. Over the years, we've had vacancies in the Department of Public Works. We bring in somebody new, but it comes in at a starting lower step in the salary scale and so that, over time and over several positions, brings savings. The Measure Q budget includes a reduction in both revenue and expenditures. Revenues are driven by sales tax, as mentioned earlier. This is the result of the current state of the economy countrywide. We anticipate a decrease of $114,000 in revenues and we are also adjusting the expenditures by $217,000 in the several funds that it currently supports, the Parks and Recreation and the lighting and landscape district budgets. I'll talk about the details of those budgets next. The Parks and Recreation budget includes, again, a reduction, equal reduction in revenue and expenditures. Revenues for the department remain steady as anticipated overall. No, we don't anticipate a decrease in any of the service revenues, but we do, but we have reduced the contribution from the general fund as well as Measure Q to accommodate for the increases in fiscal year 2425 that were approved during the mid-year budget, as well as for the reprioritization of projects in the fiscal year 2526 budget. More in detail, what does that mean for the department? The department has reduced cost or removed projects, moved these projects down the road for another year and has incorporated other projects. Of the projects that have been reduced or removed includes the Littleton Center, Pier Park Playground, Chabola Center renovation, the sports complex, Callmark Improvements project was reduced, graffiti abatement and tree service contracts were reduced. The department has rescheduled the purchase of a stump grinder and a leaf vacuum truck. There is an equal purchase in another budget, which we will get to, and bench replacement, connects box and the installation of cameras in several parks. Projects added or new cost added to the budget includes salary and benefit adjustments, unfunded pension liability cost increases, vehicle and maintenance repair costs, the replacement of the pool filter and screen system, which has a cost of $95,000, purchase of a flatbed cart and a shade structure for the market, fuel cost, office supplies, utility services for all facilities, software for the market to do better and improve tracking and services for booths at the market and a non-call welding service for the market as well. The incorporation of a GALT recreation magazine for our constituents and increased cost in state and county permits.
Quick question, I, I see graffiti up there, I thought that was under, didn't the police deal with graffiti waste? Parks have that.
We found it more cost efficient to handle it in-house within our park systems. We still have the graffiti abatement, graffiti abatement in our LNL landscaping, but within our parks, we felt our staff could handle the majority of it.
Okay.
But isn't that, wasn't that always under Measure R? Graffiti abatement? It has, was for the longest time.
It's not.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to get back to you on that because we just administer the report writing and documentation of the graffiti in town and call out the vendor. I think some of it's done by Armando's team and Public Works will do some based on the severity of the graffiti, like threats or racist type graffiti, they'll, you know, just put something over the top of it, no matter what the color is. How that breaks down, I'm not sure because Public Works handles the billing portion for us on that, so I'd have to get back to you with the breakdown as Measure R versus what parks is covering. And it's actually not parks, it's the LNL, right?
Yeah, depending on the location, we have several areas that aren't covered by any LNLs.
Right.
Just the O6, so we just decided to handle everything in-house and only report anything that has to do with gang-related, racial motivation, motivated and severe, severe type of graffiti like that will report automatically to PD.
I just wanna make sure that, I don't know how to word this, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're not, you know, using Measure Q money to pay for something that was already supposed to be paid for somewhere else, 'cause this is under Measure Q slides, that's what concerns me as all.
Our staff are in the parks cleaning, you know, before we didn't have the staff there to take action. If we found it today, we'd have to report it, it may take one to two days to get them out there to clean it, when our guys are there cleaning anyways, and it's just a quick paint, they keep everything there, they can just knock it out.
So we don't subcontract graffiti abatement anymore, or?
Not within the parks.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, but there may be, I'm sorry. There may be an expense that can be crossed back to Measure R potentially in the parks specifically, so we can go back and do some work on that.
So if like somebody, if there was graffiti on the side of like some businesses or something building and we had our graffiti abatement, people will take care of it, that'd be different than if somebody graffiti the side of a bathroom at a park?
Correct.
Handled differently.
Right, 'cause current, yes, administratively is handled differently. There may be a different way we can charge back off of Q back to Measure R if some of the work it's been doing hasn't reached Measure R billing. I'll have my staff do some reconciliation on that.
Thanks.
On the lighting and landscape districts, we've also made adjustments to the budget and you'll notice that there's an increase, net increase in the LNL or lighting and landscape district budgets of $211,000, which includes several items, salary and benefit adjustments related to landscape and street maintenance, unfunded pension liability costs. This budget also includes the Carillion Boulevard Landscape Improvements project, which has a budget of $225,000 to renovate landscape in the Carillion Boulevard. Utility cost increases, street lighting maintenance, operational supplies, and we've removed or reduced the cost, anticipated cost for the purchase of the vehicle and leaf vacuum trailer, as well as the asphalt and gopher abatement contracts.
So on the LNLs, these were, these are revenues that came in above what the projected revenues were gonna be?
This is the additional contribution from Measure Q. So we've reduced some of the contribution to Parks and Rec, but we're increasing to the lighting and landscape district.
Okay, 'cause I was like, how would you not know what those were if they're fixed pretty much for years? That, that's what confused me, okay.
No, it's all Measure Q. The gas tax budget has a significant adjustment in both revenue and expenses. This is changing practice, budgeting practice for capital projects. In the past, we budgeted capital projects for street maintenance and street improvements in the gas tax fund, which as costs have increased, has, does not currently provide sufficient resources to fund those projects. And in the last few years, those projects have been subsidized or supported by Measure A and instead of creating a not-so-transparent lens by budgeting in, in the gas tax slash streets fund and transferring from Measure A, we are directly budgeting in the Measure A fund for improved transparency. When we get to the Measure A fund, you will notice the projects that we've transferred from this fund. The Stormwater Fund anticipates an increase in revenues of $2,800 and savings of $2,400 The Water Fund anticipates an increase in expenditures of $139,000, which includes salary and benefit adjustments, unfunded pension liability costs, billing costs, the fuel master program with minimal increase of $132, the urban water management program update and permits related to new development. The Waste Water Fund anticipates an increase in appropriations of $476,000, which includes salary and benefit savings, an increase in unfunded pension liability, an increase in billing costs, and several projects, including the sanitary sewer system management plan, the V System Replacement Project, and the replacement of an existing utility vehicle, as well as the reprioritization of the wastewater collection systems and GSP project. The Firing Range Budget includes an increase in appropriations of $118,000, and it anticipates an increase of revenue of $9,000. Cost increases are related to salary and benefit adjustments, unfunded pension liability, equipment rental supplies, but the biggest cost is the repairs of the West Range, which are a new capital project. The Transit Fund anticipates an increase in appropriation of $7,400, which is the net of salary and benefit savings, unfunded pension liability, the Fuel Master Program, and the elimination of the Courtyard Improvements Project budget. The Streets/Grants Fund includes a decrease in revenue, which is an adjusted amount for an anticipated grant that is now based on actual award, which is now $1.8 million of the original rough estimate of $2 million. On the expenditure side, we've incorporated the transfer to the General Fund as well as the Gas Tax Fund, which were mentioned earlier, the transfer of $2.6 million to General Fund, free reimbursement for the purchase of the Transit Center Facility, and the reduction in revenue on the Walnut Avenue Improvements Project, which is now maybe to be funded at $1.8 million. The Capital Acquisition Impact Fee anticipates an increase in appropriations of $5.7 million. This includes several projects, the Fiber Optic Project to provide infrastructure for internet services at Parks and Recreation Facilities, the Roof and Canopy Project at the Corporation Yard, the Amador and Carroll Intersection Traffic Improvement Project, the Walnut Avenue Improvements Project, and small adjustments in the Public Works Admin Budget and Planning Budgets.
Mr. Solario, can you please just briefly explain what Fund 11 is?
Fund 11 is a fund that is primarily funded by impact fees. Those are fees collected from developers. And so the purpose of these impact fees is to allow the city to expand services for, as a result of new development. And that can be expand facilities, expand, provide new facilities for new services. So it's primarily for, to address capital needs throughout the city.
Real quick, and probably Mr. Griffin needs to answer this. Can you remind me what the Walnut Avenue Improvement Project is? What it's doing?
Yes, that is the. I'm sorry, I was thinking of a different project. That is, we have a grant-funded project for improvements for, to the, to the roadway east of Walnut. And then we also have improvements to the intersection of Emerald Vista and Walnut, adding a rapid rectangular flashing beacon and adding some curb gutter sidewalk and also doing some sidewalk gap closures along the north side of Walnut, just east of Emerald Vista. And so some of that too would be our match.
So Emerald Vista is getting a crosswalk?
Emerald Vista is getting a crosswalk. That is a grant-funded project through Seco.
So that's the area of the empty lot, the grass lot, right?
No, Emerald Vista is up by my, my house.
I thought Emerald Vista is the one between Carillion and, isn't it that vacant lot?
Right by the freeway, just, just east of the freeway.
Yeah, it's the vacant, that big grass area.
Emerald Vista is the one that goes up to the back of Lake Canyon.
Yeah, it's gonna be our next.
That turns into a dare?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know, that's what I'm talking about, so.
There's, there's homes, um, both, all four corners. But, I mean, there's some that were county at some point. I don't know that we ever got.
I, I meant, so a little bit further east of Emerald Vista is that commercial?
Vintage oak. Is where that, where you're thinking, but, okay. So there, so this is money we haven't spent yet, but it's gonna, because that hasn't happened, obviously. Okay. And then, but we didn't pay for the new lights that went up at Emerald, or I'm sorry, at Walnut and Marengo, right? That was the developer? That's not what that is?
Correct, yeah, those were improvements required as a condition of approval for the Liberty Ranch Development Project.
Okay, that's right.
The Parks Impact Fee is experiencing savings of $210,000 in appropriation and an increase in revenue of $57,000. The savings are basically the net of the elimination of the Walker Park Turf Project, which was completed in prior years without the use of impact fees, and the addition of the new skate park project. The Water and Wastewater Impact Fee Funds will also experience an increase in revenue of $87,000 and expenditure of $300,000. The $300,000 are, include the Vintage Oak Lift Station Project in the amount of $300,000. Sacramento Transportation Authority Fund, or known as the Measure A Fund, will experience an increase in revenues of $150,000. And on the expenditure side, it has a net increase of $193,000, which includes a reduction in the transfer to the Gas Tax Fund, as mentioned earlier, and the addition of projects that would have otherwise been funded in the Gas Tax Fund that include appropriations for the Wendy Hope and Amador Project, the annual payment rehab, the streets right-of-way maintenance, improvements to the Walnut Avenue, and that's it. The Community Facilities District 2005-1 Budget that supports police services is anticipated to have an increase in appropriation of $12,000. That is the net of an increase in the cost allocation, salary and benefit adjustments, unfunded pension liability, and a reduction in capital expenditures. Measure R is similar to the General Fund, and Measure Q is expected to have a decrease in sales tax revenues, net, overall net decrease of $67,000. Part of the sales tax reduction is offset by an increase in interest. And on the expenditure side, we, we're experiencing savings of $405,000. This includes the transfer of two positions to the General Fund, one in Field Operations and another one in Detectives Division. This, there's an additional position left unfunded due to difficulty filling the position. The total count within, of positions within the Measure R budget is in line with the Measure R spending plan. The Solid Waste Fund will experience a small decrease in revenues of $11,000 and an increase of approximately $2,000 or $2,900, which is net cost or net of an increase in billing cost, the loss of, the additional cost of hazardous waste recycling programs and net reduction in administrative costs. The, I just wanted to note that the loss in revenue is primarily driven by the Vasova Grant that previously funded hazardous waste programs. It's not that we didn't apply or didn't qualify for it, but there's no longer a funding source for it at the state level.
The hazardous waste, is that when the city does that collection that went in?
That is correct. And so the city will continue to host those events, just that they will be funded by revenues from charges for services. The Community Facilities District 2020-1 will experience an increase in revenues of $10,700. And as the district continues to build, anticipates an increase in appropriation of $173,000, includes a minor increase in salary and benefits, the purchase of a leaf vacuum with trailer, expanded utility services and salary and benefits also in the Parks and Recreation or Landscape Maintenance Division. The Citizens Option for Safety Fund anticipates an increase in revenue of $6,800 and an increase in appropriation of $45,000, which includes salary and benefit adjustments as well as unfunded pension liability cost increases. Finally, the redevelopment and successor agency funds are being adjusted in accordance with the last and final drops or final recognized operations payment schedule as approved by the Council and the Countywide Oversight Committee. Any questions on any of the slides, any of the funds? That concludes my presentation.
All right, so this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing before we hear any more comments from Council. So the public hearing is open. Members of the public wish to speak, you may, just have to bring a speaker card up, right? Yeah, so bring a speaker card up to Ms. Hubert, and you can come to the podium. So, Council, do you have any comments while we wait for? Any members of the public?
I think we asked during.
Yeah, well, I figured we asked during the. Wait for Mr. Wenzel, looks like he's running out of card.
Mr. Mayor, may I can ask a question to Solario? Solario, could you go that slide 2025, 2026 projected fund balance? Just, just funny, I wanna make sure there's a clarification. Yes, you know, if we're looking at the General Fund, the starting balance is 23 million, right? And the ending balance is almost 25 million, right? And the General Fund looks healthy, right?
That's correct.
If we look at the bottom, the total all over is, fund balance is 174 million. And the ending balance, fund balance is of 161. And we are in negative almost 12 million. Did you have concern? And what, have any concern? When you're all over, we are 12 million. Does the report show, do you have any concern?
I, I'm not concerned. And, and as I explained earlier, part of our obligation is to spend some of these funds. The use of fund balance throughout the city budget is primarily focused on the utility funds as well as on the impact fee funds, which is, these includes projects that are part of our rate, our existing rate model for utilities, for stormwater, water and sewer, as well as in the impact fees. And Mr. Griffin can potentially explain some of the projects that are funded in these utility funds if necessary. But the use of fund balance is built into the rate model. We are collecting fees that provide sufficient funding for these kind of projects. Unfortunately, we cannot collect all of it at once, so we build up the savings. And over the years, as we accumulate sufficient funding and as new mandates, new requirements come up, as well as infrastructure ages, we make use of that fund balance and maintain infrastructure up to date and in compliance. Similar with impact fees, we collect fees from developers and to address the impacts of development. And over time, once we have enough for those projects and it's time to complete those projects, the city budgets and makes use of those funds. And it's part of our responsibility also to our residents as well as to our developers to present these projects and actually bring them to, to completion.
So, so that means it's a 12 million kind of big gap. And your opinion as, with your, so that gap in the future, next five years should be very much going to close, right?
Correct. The, the use of fund balance will fluctuate depending on availability of funds as well as the need for expansion due to growth in the city, as well as the need for additional infrastructure or aging infrastructure in the utility areas.
All right, thank you. I just want to make sure public know that when they look them up, there can be a big gap. So I want to make sure they understand. Thank you, Mr. Solario.
Yeah, just to comment on what Vice Mayor said. I mean, the important thing for public is to look is, is the, the General Fund. You know, we have revenue and then we have expenditures. And the revenue is more than the expenditures. That's the important thing. Those bottom numbers, you know, those are skewed by enterprise funds, you know, that are a mass amount, huge amounts of money, but those monies are collected with the intent of spending specific on projects. So those, that money is gonna go down. So, Mr. Wenzel, a budget meeting would not be complete without you speaking, sir. Welcome to the podium.
I don't know, is this on?
Yes.
Okay, well, I used to do this kind of work, and I used to be a lot taller and a lot healthier. So, thank you. It's, I like the format on this and it kind of dovetails back to what was presented for the budget. So I just, in a big general question here, we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year, the end of this month. And so this kind of interacts with where our accounts are now. So you're looking at where our accounts are now, and it helps to give you a clue for, just kind of a sanity check for, if you say something's gonna go down $75,000, say like because the revenue from the taxes has gone down. Do you, do you get that information from the accounts now? And you see the reduction?
So, Mr. Wenzel, just to remind you, your questions have to be directed to the Council, and then we can defer Mr. Solario to the answer.
Who wants this question? To the, to the Council. I thought public forum, we could have interaction, but that's fine. I, I'm always getting nailed for talking to.
Am I incorrect?
Yeah, I know, I'll just clarify. It's a good question. Under the Brown Act, public comment is before the legislature.
Yeah, I know. I'll just clarify. It's a good question. Under the Brown Act, public comment is before the legislative body. That's the public comment, right, is to the body. The, the council can obviously direct questions, refer things to staff, but not to members of staff or other members of the public.
So it can't be a back and forth still, even between us, there's not supposed to be. So just go ahead and direct your questions and we'll try to summarize.
I got it. So I'm going to modify my question a little bit. I've asked this question before. Before Lorenzo Heinz came in, we used to have this monster. It was about 350 pages. If anybody remembers it, probably, I still have a bad back from carrying it around. But that has somewhat disappeared. And I asked the question at the time when he reformat it. I like the reformat. I like this format. It's clean. But in, I'm just going to call it the monster. It had a lot of granularity to it. So you could look at particularly Parks and Rec. It gave you a lot of, you know, clarity and if you wanted to talk to Amando or to Ms. Garcia, you could just ask a question, you know, so what's happening here? And then also it gave some clarity as to like the overhead costs that gets charged against Parks and Rec. So I guess that's one question. Anybody know what happened to that? Is that gone forever? Will we ever see the 350 pound gorilla again? Anybody know? And I know we have, I know we have, we have new, new staff, but just wondering. Okay, so we don't know.
No, we're not supposed to have dialogue. Well, hearing your questions, we'll try to respond after you've been speaking.
Okay. And another question would be then, every time I look at the ACFIR and I look at the budget, I always wondered to myself, in the solid waste, and as you and I have discussed this many times, Sean, what, what does, where is that all accounted for where cow waste bills the commercial accounts? And then they, they just strip out, when they bill the commercial accounts, then they calculate and they give back to the city the franchise fee. And just where does, where is that? So if anybody has an idea about that, I'd be appreciative. But I mainly want to thank Mr. Slario for the hard work that he's put in. It's obvious when he starts answering those questions, I know what that takes. You have to know it. And so that's very appreciated. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. We could, if, what we can do is I can maybe just ask the finance department if they wouldn't mind in the near future, just shooting us over the council an email and then we can get that information to Mr. Wenzel about his question regarding the solid waste. His question is basically, so cow waste collects, they bill the commercial accounts directly. They don't, they don't, we don't bill. We, you know, the, the residentials are billed through the city, right? And then we collect that. So his question has always been, if they, if they bill the commercial customers directly and then they pay us a franchise fee, where's the dispersal of those funds, like?
Right.
Yes.
Where do they get in the?
Yeah, okay. So if we can maybe get that information at some point from finance and if we need more clarification, I'd be happy to try to get more, you know, more specific. If that's not quite clear enough, we can, we can we can communicate after, after this meeting tonight. And so we can try to get Mr. Wenzel a question. I think to answer your broader question, Mr. Wenzel, I think what happens is funny with the budget and I've seen it kind of change over the, the time I've been in office. You have a really, really, you know, the monster, you call it, right? It's so detailed and so down to the thing that it's just literally over everybody's head. Nobody can understand it. And then we go from that to a different type of budget where it's just kind of the cliff notes, where it's, it's easy to understand. It generalizes, we see graphs and pie graphs and things. And it's like the public can sit there and they go, okay, I kind of understand that. It doesn't get into like, you know, the detailed line items, hundreds of, hundreds of items, but it's, but it's generally easier to understand. But then people come forward like yourself who have a very in-depth knowledge of finance and they say, well, I want to see the more detailed. So then, so I think finding the balance between those two is always the challenge. But I think this one is detailed down to a certain point. Does, you know, some stuff is generally categorized, obviously, but I think that's where, you know, and what public may not realize is that we ask a lot of questions outside of these meetings and ask, you know, department heads detailed questions about what was that, what's that, what's inside of that? But, but there is a certain level of trust, obviously, we have, right, as council members. And so hopefully that kind of answers some of your questions, but.
Well, if we're making a motion, I vote we do not go back to the monster.
Yeah.
But if the information is there and I believe you could ask, I mean, it's all a matter of public record. So if you have a question that's very detailed, that's not in these type of reports, you can ask, just not me.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, this, just a reminder to the public, I know you know this, Mr. Wenzel, but this, all this documents is online at any given time. If somebody wanted to know the breakdown of a particular line item, they're welcome to email the city and we can get that information back to you. That's always available to the public. We want to make sure that everybody understands. But I do like the, Mr. Slario, you, I want to do applaud you. I do, I, you're very sharp, definitely have a good understanding of this and although it's, can be a bit daunting and complicated, you know, us, nobody up here, I think, sitting up here has an accounting background, but you make it, you present it in a way that we understand it. And you're good about answering questions that we send you and, and so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Slario. I've sat through almost 20 years of council meetings, not just GALT. I've sat through almost 20 years of three school boards and two fire districts. And by far, and maybe I'm understanding a little bit more, but y'all do it different, to be honest with you. But you present very well. It is very clear and I really appreciate it. And I know it's, you've done a lot of work and you probably eat, sleep and dream numbers going through your head. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, and the one last question that I think was posed, I was wondering, the cost allocation does still exist. So what Mr. Harry, Mr. Wenzel asked was, do we still, we still, that still exists, that, that formula, right? The 23 point whatever percent we draw from each department?
It's a little more complicated than the 23%, but yes, there is. We are currently looking or exploring other options in terms of a model. And once we have those options available, and we'll likely present those.
Let me, let me ask you, let me, and Penny, maybe you could answer this, but let me just, since we're on the subject, I don't want to belabor this because I know we don't want to get to this meeting. We're almost done. But in your opinion, in both your opinion, do you, would you, do you think a direct allocation model where you directly bill individual instances instead of just generalizing percentages, what do you think is better?
I like the cost allocation method. It makes our jobs a lot easier.
The one we're using now?
To be honest. And we do have a current cost plan. Is it under review or something?
We currently have a, we have a cost plan and we're exploring options in terms of, over the years, we've made changes operationally with Parks and Recreation, taking other responsibilities, Department of Public Works.
Right.
Shifting years. And so that model, we're looking to update it to reflect those changes. So that may result in changes in how we allocate the expenses for central services. But the, the goal is the same, that we recover as much as we can for the expenses that the general fund encourages in providing central services to other departments.
Right. Central service, that's the exact word. Yeah, I failed to mention that there, but that's, yeah, you understood my question. So thank you. Any other public comment before I close the public hearing?
No public comment.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing and allow the council to have any other additional questions before we wrap this up. So the public hearing is closed. And with that, do I have any other questions from the council before I look to have a motion to approve the midterm budget adjustments? Nothing? All right. Well, with that, I will be looking for a motion to, one, approve the midterm budget for fiscal year 2025, '26. Number two, approving the capital improvement plan '25, '26 through '29, '30. Number three, approving the FY '25, '26 California constitutional appropriations limit. And number four, approving the master fee schedule, adjusting the amount of user fees and regulatory fees for public services. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve that. Yes.
Moved by Councilman Pratton.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reed. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Approved to five to zero. Moving on to next item, item L, regular calendar. We have from the Human Resources Department, our final item of this evening is the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Galt and the Galt Police, Galt Police Department, Civilians Association and Salary Schedules. Ms. Kobe?
Good evening, mayor and council. Presented before you tonight is the Galt Police Department Civilians Association Memorandum of Understanding. We are asking you to adopt a resolution approving the GPDCA MOU, Salary Schedules and Amendments to the Benefits. The summary of the GPDCA MOU includes a three-year term, 1% increase for positions that are already within the median-based salary and market adjustments for other classifications over a three-year term to bring them within 5% of the median-based salary. The addition of the permanent intermittent employee status for police dispatcher. This will allow dispatchers to work half the amount of time and still remain eligible for benefits. The permanent intermittent status was established to promote flexibility within the division and support retention. We also negotiated a $50 increase towards bilingual pay for certified employees. We are continuing the city's 80% contribution towards the Kaiser Medical Plan. We've updated the longevity eligibility from 15 and 20 years of service to 10 and 15 years of service, keeping the percentage amounts the same. And we are increasing the vacation accrual. After 22 years of service, you will now earn six weeks of vacation annually. The financial impact of the salary and benefit changes equate to approximately $41,000 annually. Is there any questions?
Any questions from council? I know we, obviously, we, most of this, just for the public, these, these discussions and negotiations still happen behind closed doors. That's the policy with this type of thing. And so we've met many, many times and discussed all this, but is there any questions that want to be asked now? Clarification? Okay. Well, with that, I just want to say thank you to, you know, both sides. Our, our negotiator that works on behalf of the city and thank him and then I want to thank those that act, you know, on behalf of the other labor bargaining units, not, you know, all of them. I know some of them don't have representation, but I'm glad that, I'm always happy to get through this stuff. It's always a tough time to get through these and, you know, come out with something that's fair for everybody, fair for our employees and fair for the taxpayers. And, and so I'm glad that we were able to come to an agreement relatively soon, quickly, it seemed like, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Also to Laura Sotelo, she is the president of the GPDCA. So thank you to her and the negotiations team for working so collaboratively and, you know, getting this contract to cross the finish line.
All right. Well, with that, if there is no questions, are there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Sorry, I think that we need, yes.
Oh.
We need it, we just don't have it.
Right.
We need it, somebody.
I didn't even, I didn't even have that amount. Yes. Easy.
I'll put in the speaker card.
All right. Well, with that, I'll be looking for a, a motion to adopt a resolution, one, approving the memorandum of understanding MOU and revised salary schedules with the Galt Police Department Civilians Association, GPDCA, for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2028. And number two, authorizing the city manager to execute and carry out these arrangements, I'm sorry, these agreements and amendments. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by council, moved by Councilmember Reed, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Can I have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved five to zero. Item M, communication. Do we have any this evening?
None.
City clerks report.
None.
Comments by staff. Mr. Rice.
Only comment tonight is a reminder that City Hall will be in staff, city offices will be closed Thursday due to the holiday. And that's the only comment we have.
Chris, I have one. Just a reminder about the public meeting for the skate park project next Thursday.
Next Thursday, yes. Sorry, Joe. Just to reiterate for the people who are watching, that was the, there's a public meeting for the Chabola Skate Park Project. It will be at the Chabola Center, correct, at 6:00 PM on the 26th, which is next Thursday evening. If anybody in the public would like to attend, we would love to have you and have your feedback on the, talking about design stuff and on that project that's moving forward. So no other comments by staff. Then that's it for that. All right. Moving on to item P, comments by city council members, feature agenda items. Mr. Pratton.
All right. Yes, I did want to comment, Mr. Slario. Thank you for your presentation. It was excellent. Just like Mr. Rodriguez said, it, I mean, that was an hour's worth of time, but it was, it was all great information. Thank you. I did attend an open house for the Turning Point Community Program. So this is, this is a, it operates 37 programs in eight Northern California counties and they've, they've taken on a location here in Galt. They've been in Elk Grove for quite a while. And they provide quite a bit of services for Galt, so they felt they needed to open up here in town. So I would suggest anybody who's got time to go over there and check it out. It's pretty interesting. They, they handle individual families and group therapies, psychiatric supports, in homes, schools, crisis intervention, advocacy, rehabilitation. So they cover quite a bit. It's mostly this facility, which is at 908 C Street, which is the old Marvell, right near, right near Maple Street. So they've got an office in there and, you know, as Galt grows, these are, these are things that, that are added, right? When we're small, we can't have these things, but as we've been growing, these are things that become available to us. So I think people need to become aware of this. They do advocate a lot through the schools. So a lot of times the teachers and folks at the schools are aware of it, but, you know, parents and folks outside in the community are always aware of it. So I ask them to maybe show up during public comment or something and give a brief something, a five-minute speech or something. So hopefully they'll do that in the near future and let everybody understand a little bit better of what it is they do. But I'm happy to see them moving into town. That's the only one I got.
All right. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the public comment. Thank you for Ken Lee and Eric Wenzel. Thank you for asking that question. That question is very important and if we can something implement, we certainly will do it. And thank you for all staff. Thank you for our whole staff. Thank you for every director working hard, make the city succeed. Thank you for city manager. Thank you for the, thanks. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Reed.
First off, I thank you, Mr. Slario, for the presentation, like everybody else said. I also wanted to thank all the city staff for answering all of our questions. In all the emails that we send before the meeting and then sitting here amongst us, answering all of our questions that we come up with at the last minute, that we didn't think of before. So thank you for all of that. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I too wanted to thank Mr. Lee because I feel like he brings a different perspective. And when he said he's walking on the sidewalk with his walker and he's looking down and that different perspective, I think it's wonderful. Please keep bringing us those perspectives because we need to hear from all walks of life throughout the city. So I really appreciate you being here, religiously almost. And Mr. Wenzel for being a watchdog over budgets, over a lot of decisions. I really appreciate it. It makes us feel like people are listening and interested in what's going on around them. So I do appreciate that. I do want to do a shout out and I don't know which department, so I apologize. It was either Parks and Rec or Public Works, but I had turned onto Basau going, heading west from Marengo and that. And that middle median, just after, just after that turn, I thought, oh, my gosh, look at these huge weeds that are just popping out from the flowers. And I'm like, oh, I really need to get someone out here. And then about, I don't know, 20 feet down the road, there was someone in the middle pulling them all up. And by the time I came back that direction, the whole median was cleaned up and the flowers were beautiful and everything looked great. So please, whoever, I don't know who is in charge of that, but please let your employees know that it is noticed and very appreciated, all that they do, not just down that, but all around town. And I know it's a big town to have to keep clean, so I thank them for that. It's probably a thankless job and here, now there's a thank you. I do have a question though, from something, I think Mr. Lee actually brought up, brought up a question. Is there a rule when someone is doing, they do their garden or their lawn and everything and they blow it out to the middle of the street? Is that okay? Because I see it all the time. I just didn't, I mean, because it eventually obviously makes its way back down into the storm drain, right? It just goes back. So I don't know, are there rules against that? I don't.
You know, it's a good question. I'm not sure. I mean, we could investigate to see.
I mean, I don't know that it's that important, but I just started thinking, you know, I see it all the time and think it's just going to go right back to the gutter as the cars go by and down into that storm drain. The sweep, the street sweeper comes by once a month, so that's not really going to do it. But anyway, that, that was just a quick question. And then I want to piggyback on myself, on my Walnut project. Sorry, Mr. Griffin. Does that happen to include a light at the intersection of East Stockton and Walnut? Because that is so dark right there by the free, you know, the freeway entrance and exit, right? There, there's no lighting.
As far as the specifics, I'm going to check back with the team and report back to council on what the specific components of the project are.
Okay. Because I thought, I know at one point I did talk to a previous Public Works Director and he had told me at that point that those two properties right on that corner, on the east, north and south corners are in our county. And so he said that, that we wouldn't do that. So they, they do have, those two corners have different garbage cans. They are, they are, at least they've got the waste management garbage cans, the two corners. But, or at least they're sitting there. Maybe they're just old ones that they kept at some point. But anyway, regardless, it would be nice if they have a light. And I don't know if that's a Caltrans thing as well, if they need to help with the lights or smudge or whoever. Anyway, something to look into because that intersection, unless they're going to close that one. But anyway, it's just very dark. Another quick question. What department does the youth commission work under?
Clerks.
The clerks. Is that the only commission committee you have? Okay. The reason why I'm asking is because, and, and this is probably going to ruffle some feathers, but I'm concerned about the Commission on Aging. I feel like they're less of a commission on aging as they are an event committee throwing activities. And I feel like in the past, before COVID, we had the, we had the Commission on Aging, trying to do their thing, that held events like health fairs and different things like that, that was kind of community-wide. And then we had the senior club, who actually did events. They did bingo. They did those kind of things. And that wasn't necessarily anything governed by the commission other than that the commissioners sometimes helped and volunteered to go there. So my concern is that we are missing an element. I almost feel like the Commission on Aging, it's supposed to be this official commission. It's a commission. And yet they're planning casino runs. They're doing bingo, which are great. They do have the resource center. But it just seems like they're being utter, underutilized. And, and I don't know that their actual function, what I think they should be, should be under Parks and Rec because I, I think that's not the responsibility of Parks and Rec. I think maybe it should be moved to either under the city manager or administration somewhere. I just, you know, I just feel like that we're missing something here. So if I have support, I would like to see if staff can maybe look in to seeing where this commission should be sitting, if they should be even there. And maybe it just transfers into a activities committee or something that helps Parks and Rec, if that's all that it needs to be, something along those lines. And I don't know if there's any other support for that. If not, that's fine. I just think we're missing something there. And then one last thing. And I know, well, actually two last things, but I'll stay with the Commission on Aging-esque. I'm, I'm a little irritated because I keep hearing, I keep getting phone calls and emails and texts about Galt Place. So I did a little bit of my own investigation, called actually someone who's very interested in the issues going on over there and have been directed to Environmental Health, the Public Guardians Office. And it is my understanding, and from what the, the little contact I've had with those two offices, that they could come in and, and significantly help. But they need, they need the residents to step up and not ever step back. They've got to come forward and they have to be strong. They're going to have to let people in. And then the city's got to give these environmental, everybody, the support and let them know that there is an issue there. I do know that there's already been two swabs that have been taken, the results of those I have not seen yet. But those won't be official. You know, because it wasn't an official person who collected the swab. But there is significant issue in there. Too many, too many hospitalizations in the last three months for that area. And this is coming from public officials, or public health. There is, there is a concern whether we need to get, and I appreciate that our code enforcement has been in there. I appreciate our fire's been in there and they've checked what they can check. They've done their job. I think the issues are beyond what Galt is capable of monitoring. And we need to reach out. We need help. And it might not even just stop at, at Galt Place. It may be other large area or large apartment complexes, whether they're for seniors or for families or for anyone. I think we're, we are doing a disservice to our citizens by not following through, making sure that their living conditions are better than they are in some places. I do have an appointment with Environmental Health, a phone appointment, a phone appointment to, for them to answer more questions for me. I do have a, one of the public nurses is very concerned and, or I should say she's very interested. And honestly, what I would hate is for things to complete, continue the way they are and these bigger environmental health and public guardianships come in and they just shut down the building. That I don't want to happen. So we've got to see movement or we're going to have 80 displaced residents. That will honestly, according to what I'm hearing from the Public Guardian Office, that bill will be footed by the owner of that building. So something needs to change and I don't, I, you know, I don't know where more to go because I feel like, I, I feel like Galt, I know our, our staff has done their job. I get that. But we're beyond that at this point.
So if I may ask, like, we had like a SWAT team hit that, I mean, maybe that's not the correct terminology, but we had police, fire, code enforcement, all do, just recently, about two weeks ago, a review of the building from top to bottom, going through all the common areas, poking into rooms where, you know, they allow us to do. So outside of a few minor, you know, public area infractions, you know, it was relatively okay. You know, just recently, we were aware of some air conditioning going out and there was a remedy and they're fixing it quickly and providing air conditioning for those that didn't have it. So in our view, like, anything that we have brought to the attention of the management, they have addressed. And they've been forthcoming about us coming in there. They don't fight us. They, they let us in on their own free will. I, I'm not sure, like, what the next step would be.
So the next step, according to environmental health, is to have, was the air quality tested in different areas and in the rooms? Because that's probably, according to them, according to the public health nurse, that could be how sepsis went quick, is something airborne. And so, and we don't, we don't do that. I get that. That's beyond the city. We, we need environmental health in there. Has the water been tested? Is there something in the water? These are responsibilities that honestly, the building owners should do, but environmental health is willing, they'll come in and do. I don't know who pays for it, how that all works. But if we can get some of these things, even if it's just to rest assure these residents who think that they're living, I mean, they're the ones living there. I'm not. None of us are. We're not there on a 24-hour basis. But if we can get some of these things tested, maybe there's something that legitimately the building owner has no clue is there. And if, if, if he knows, may very well go in and fix it, you know? So there's some things that I think maybe should be tested. I don't think that's necessarily the city's responsibility. But again, I'm concerned if, well, I'm concerned about the residents. There's like, I think the last count was 12 or 13 residents out of 85 were hospitalized in a two-month period. I, and I know the, the reasoning is, well, they're elderly and that happens. I get it. I don't think we're hearing that from the other large senior homes. I know they have problems. This is not unique. But I do feel like something more needs to happen. If I'm completely out of place, I get it. I will.
So could you, Bonnie, could you, when you have, when you finish your appointment with them, could you report back to Chris and maybe myself and let us, or he could report to Chris and be, Chris considered? And just see what you can facilitate. If, I agree with everything you're saying, that I think that our people are doing their job. And I think that what fire is looking for and what code enforcement is looking for, whatever, are within a different purview of kind of what I think we might be dealing with. And so I think if it comes down to us just, you know, that we need city staff or city leadership to, you know, maybe act on behalf of those residents to make some phone calls and say, hey, what would it take to get someone from the county to come in and check this place out, whatever like that? If that's what we're looking at doing, I'm thinking that's the next step is. I, I would support that. I think that's what we need to do. Because, you know, we need to rule something in or out once and for all because I hear this stuff all the time. So anyways, I know this is not.
Yeah, I was about to say, Mayor, are we, I would just like to kind of, because the public does have the benefit of knowing this was going to be discussed. Probably need to nip the conversation, but if there, if we can put it in terms of a future agenda item request or something, or if you just wanted to share that.
I guess my, my question to my colleagues would be, would you agree, and after I come back with whatever I find out, would you agree to staff looking into how we can support fixing, you know, or encouraging or whatever the issue if the environmental?
Councilmember Rodriguez, I would agree to that.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I don't, I'm not asking for a change right now. Let's go. But I mean, anyway, so that would be my, my request to my colleagues. Is it okay if staff then can follow up with what we find out?
I would support that, I think.
Mr. Lee, we just talked to the city manager and he spoke there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And if we need to, if future agenda is an item or whatever, but I think we could, I think where we know what we need, and I think Chris understands. So I think we'll, yeah. And if you could please, me as well, Chris, we've had this conversation many times. So thank you. And thank you, Bonnie. Anything else?
No, I think that, I think you heard from me enough.
Yeah. I just want to, so quickly, I just want to thank public comment, Mr. Lee. Do appreciate your comments, Mr. Lee. It's nice to have somebody come up and thank staff or some of our workers for doing XYZ instead of always being the, you know, the delivery of a complaint. So thank you for mixing the two. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel, for your public comments. As, as always, I just want to remind everybody we have Fourth of July coming up. You know, we have a lot of activities. You want to register for the parade, citigalt.org. All the information's on there. You can call Parks and Rec if you have questions, but it's about a little over two weeks away. I want to thank your staff, Armando, for a good Saturday market on the 7th. It was, looks very well attended, very well done as usual. If you can pass along my thanks to them. And, and then lastly, I want to thank the, the staff, the staff and the city manager, whoever was present, because I don't know who all was there, for, for meeting with the Cornell. You know, all the people that surround the Fairway Oaks project. I know you guys have had two subsequent meetings with those folks. One of them was, you know, a little bit unruly. I heard the other one went well the other night. But thank you, Chris, for coming by and updating me on that meeting. And I appreciate you guys doing the outreach to those people. I know that we don't have to do that, so I appreciate you guys for doing that because it's important and these guys are citizens. And, you know, it's important that we try to make this thing go as smooth as possible. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:50, I'm sorry, 8:51.